Claudia Balducci, I'm the Chair of the King County Council and I'm calling to order the county council meeting for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dimbowski.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Lambert.
Here.
Councilmember McDermott.
Here.
Councilmember Up there growth.
Here.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer.
Here.
Councilmember Zahalai.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here.
Madam Chair, I believe you have all members. We just haven't heard from Councilmember Dunn yet.
Let's see if we can make sure that Councilmember Dunn is able to participate. Let's take a quick moment and see if we can. Councilmember Dunn, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me? I'm here.
Yes, there you are. Okay, very good. We'll record you as present. Thanks for being here. Okay, um, I want to welcome everybody back from our break. We, we had a two-week break. I don't know how much of a break it was for everybody, but it sure was nice to get away for a little while. And we have a slightly more manageable agenda today, but things heat up pretty quickly into the fall as we head towards the season of our biennial budget. So I am going to just move on in the agenda today and start with approval of the minutes of July 24th. Councilmember McDermott.
I'm moved, Madam Chair. I approve the minutes of our July 24th meeting.
Minutes are before us. Any comments, questions, or changes? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, I'll pause for a second. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any additions to the agenda for today?
I have one, Madam Chair. Proposed motion 2020-0282, a motion approving the regional tourism recovery plan prepared in accordance with the 2019-2020 biennial budget ordinance. And this is being added for first reading and referral to Budget and Fiscal Management Committee.
Okay, thank you. Also, as a reminder to members, you will have received an email with the green folder items that have additional meeting materials. It was sent by Angel at around 11:00 this morning. So please make sure you have that open. This brings us to public comment. And first I'll just share some of the ground rules for how we do public comment in our remote meeting format. So for today's meeting, we will be combining public comment and the public hearings on ordinances which are listed for action, as well as item 35. General public comment is limited to matters relating to county government and may not be used for the purpose of assisting a campaign for election of any person to any office, or for the promotion of or opposition to any ballot measure, and may not address any ordinance that is on that day's council for public hearing. No. May not. I take that back. We're doing public hearing at the same time. So public comment today may address any ordinance that is on the day's council's agenda. And because it's general public comment, you can speak about any topic that is a topic of county business today. This is the, the week of the month that we do general public comment. We ask that, that people keep their comments pertinent to business and not include obscene speech. If a speaker fails to abide by restrictions, they may be ruled out of order and required to exit the virtual meeting, although we are very fortunate to have not had that happen yet. So here's how we're going to manage the process. As members of the public join this meeting, you are automatically muted. We can see your name or the last three digits of your phone number. If you plan to provide public comment, please, please listen to the Zoom call meeting. There is a time lag between the Zoom call and the online streaming or KC TV broadcast. So if you are listening to the meeting on your web browser or through KC TV, you may miss your turn. We may call on you and there's like a 20 or 30-second time lag. So please listen to the Zoom call while you are waiting to be called on for public comment. If you are listening to TV or streaming and have turned to the Zoom call to hear your name being called, please turn off or mute the TV or streaming sound because otherwise we'll hear feedback on the line. When it is your turn to speak, our clerk will call your name or the last three digits of your phone number and unmute your line. Please make sure if you have muted your own device, your own phone or computer, to unmute yourself as well. We appreciate the courtesy, but you'll also need to unmute yourself to speak. When you are ready to begin your testimony or public comment, please just respond that you're there. Wait to be acknowledged so you can be sure that we hear you. Then, once we have established that we can hear you, please start by saying and spelling your name so we can capture it accurately for the record. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and there'll be a timer which will go off when you've reached the end of two minutes. At that point, you don't need to stop immediately, but please just finish your thought or your sentence and wrap up your comments so as to allow the next person to speak shortly after. If anyone goes much beyond the two-minute limit, you may be interrupted, which we're sorry for that, or even muted in an extreme case. Or again, we haven't had to do that, luckily. Anyone who is disruptive to the meeting, as I said earlier, might be asked to leave the meeting, which in this format means discontinuing the call. So once you've completed your testimony, please hang up from the Zoom call, which makes it easier for us to manage the call and follow the remainder of the meeting on King County TV, Channel 22, or stream online at the council's website, www.kingcounty.gov/council. And you can click on the "Watch Us Live" button. So that is the lengthy script about how we are going to manage public comment. At this time, I'm going to ask our clerk to please read the items that are on for public hearing today into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 7 is proposed ordinance number 2020-0224, establishing June 19th of each year. Juneteenth is a paid holiday for King County employees eligible for leave benefits. Item 8 is proposed ordinance number 2020-0253, prohibiting law enforcement personnel from questioning except in limited circumstances. Persons under the age of 18 when Miranda rights are administered and prohibiting law enforcement personnel from requesting permission from a person under the age of 18 to conduct a search of the person or property, abodes or vehicles under that person's control unless legal counsel is provided for that person. Item 9 is proposed ordinance number 2020-0239, approving and adopting the collective bargaining agreement negotiated by and between King County, Washington State Nurses Association, Supervisors and Managers Department of Public Health, representing employees in the aforementioned departments and establishing the effectiveness of the agreement. Item 10 is proposed ordinance number 2020-0235, an ordinance relating to public transportation, approving a transit service funding agreement with Pierce Transit and the City of Auburn for the continued operation of Route 497. And then item 36 is proposed ordinance number 2020-0226, an ordinance declaring a six-month moratorium prohibiting the establishment of a new or expansion of existing wineries, breweries, distilleries, and remote tasting rooms as primary uses or as home occupations or home industries, prohibiting temporary use permits for wineries, breweries, distilleries, and remote tasting room uses under the King County Code, directing the executive to evaluate the necessary steps to comply with the Central Pigeon Town, Washington State Growth Management Hearing Board's order regarding ordinance 19030 and reporting to the council on the evaluation of compliance and status of compliance and declaring an emergency.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We have two procedural matters to make sure everything's properly before us for the public hearing. The first is on item 10. Councilmember Dimbowski, would you move to relieve Mobility and Environment Committee of that item, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, that is before us. All those in favor of relieving the Mobility and Environment Committee in order to take action on item 10, please signify by saying aye.
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 We're a little slow. We're just getting back to the vacation. Any, any opposed? In the opinion of the Chair, that very difficult motion carries. The second item is item 35. And just for the record, reminding people that earlier this year, the Growth Management Hearings Board issued an order on the county's winery, brewery, and distillery regulations. And on June 23rd, the council passed ordinance 19122, which enacted a six-month moratorium prohibiting new or expanded wineries, breweries, and distilleries, including home occupations and temporary uses associated with those types of businesses. The moratorium also directed the executive to establish steps to comply with the hearings board's order, reporting on compliance and declared an emergency. Moratoriums like this require a public hearing within 60 days of enactment under state law. We are holding that public hearing today in order to receive public testimony. And although there's no action on this item number 35 today, we will be hearing from the public on the moratorium as required by law. Okay, so with that, we now have all the items before us and general comment. And so I'm going to ask the clerk to, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the clerk to begin calling on people to give public testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first person up to speak is Maria Hudson. And I don't see her on the list, but Maria Hudson. Second person on the list is Harley Tonelli.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Harley Tonelli, H-A-L-Y-T-O-N-E-L-L-I. And I'm speaking today on behalf of the Public Defender Association in support of the My Chance Dunlap Giddens Right to Counsel Ordinance. King County must do more to protect young people in their interactions with the police. Youth to a public defender when law enforcement is asking the young person to waive their right to remain silent is essential to protecting vulnerable youth from police coercion. According to the American Bar Association, roughly 90% of juveniles who are interrogated by the police believe their constitutional right to remain silent. In 2019, approximately 86% of youth jailed in King County were Black, Indigenous, or other youth of color. King County must do more to protect our BIPOC youth. The youth right to counsel ordinance is a step in the right direction. And for that reason, the Public Defender Association strongly supports this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Kendrick Washington. I have unmuted you, or no, I have not. Please unmute yourself.
Good, good afternoon. My name is Kendrick Washington, K-E-N-D-R-I-C-K, Washington, W-A-S-H-I-N-G-T-O-N, like the very state we're in. I'm the Youth Policy Director with the ACLU of Washington, and I'm here on their behalf. And I'm testifying about the Youth Ordinance Bill. When police interrogate children, there really are no differences between the interrogation of children and interrogation of adults. Intimidation, lies, the false promise that the only person who is on their side is the very officer who has backed them into a corner. That this could be done without the presence of an attorney should shock the conscience of each of us. Now, the prosecutor's office often cites the erosion of trust as one of the many fallacies that they've listed in opposition to this bill. But let's be clear about something. You cannot erode what is not there. There is no trust. There never was. You build trust through honesty. You build trust through transparency. You build trust through ensuring that a child is afforded every single right that is available to them, and those rights aren't ignored in the name of trying to press forward in some sham of a criminal investigation. While there's been a lot of talk in the area about defunding police, what we really need to think about is defunding their power. And this is an abuse of power that has gone on for far too long in King County. And so on behalf of the ACLU of Washington, we ask that you support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Frank Gittens.
And we have.
Moving on, Karen Pilar.
Thank you. My name is Karen Piller, K-A-R-E-N-P-I-L-L-A-R.
Go ahead.
I am the managing attorney for Team Child in King County. Team Child provides civil legal representation to youth ages 12 to 24. The youth we represent are often involved in and impacted by the court systems, including juvenile court. Team Child wholeheartedly supports ordinance CB 119840, My Chance Dunlap Giddens Ordinance. We support the ordinance for reasons that have already been highlighted, including the need to ensure that youth are able to fully understand the consequences of their decisions before they speak to police. But we also know that adolescent brain develop, adolescent brains have not fully developed, and that creates risks for youth when put in positions where they have to interact with adults who have so much more power. We also know there's a greater harm caused to Black youth who are being disproportionately interrogated by the police. Team Child wants to especially highlight for the council the additional harm police interrogation causes on a youth's access to education. Police contact in the schools is something that happens regularly and often with the support of school administrators, and it leads to a coercion and pressures on the youth to cooperate and make statements. Some of these youth have learning disabilities and other communications and developmental disabilities that further impact their ability to understand their rights in these situations. After talking to the police, many youth are removed from their schools and then lose access to educational services. The contact with the police at school causes further trauma that can be humiliating, destroy relationships with school staff and personnel, because youth feel unsafe and unsupported at school. Some do not return to school because of these situations. So in closing, we ask you to please pass this ordinance and decrease the harm caused by police interactions and interrogations on our youth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Polly Giuliani.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Polly Giuliani.
Yes, please go ahead.
It is with a heavy heart I call into the council today on behalf of Next Steps Washington, founded by Annalisa and Fred Thomas, parents of the late Leonard Thomas. Next Steps organized and delivered a community letter in support of the reappointment of Deborah Jacobs as Director of Olio. I'm disheartened and discouraged to learn of the council's pending mistake in failing to reappoint Director Jacobs. Your wretched error is a terrible setback for us all and police accountability in King County. Those celebrating this news are the ones opposed to the mission of justice performed day in and day out at Olio, especially the police. Everyone recognizes King County is closer to real police accountability because of Deborah's relentless hard work and dogged activism. Director Jacobs has strong relationships with the families of the victims of police violence and has long forwarded bare causes. Her adversarial position against KC SO won the community many games, and she accomplished what was desperately needed. But that adversarial position comes with big risks, and we're incredibly thankful she was willing to take them. Director Jacobs took racist policing head-on, and her record delivered for the community. It speaks volumes that this council has passed an accountable police union contract, funds KC SO over Olio, and now would unseat Director Jacobs, all the while speaking the language of Black Lives Matter in King County. Councilmembers, the very structure of Olio requires a strong and fearless director to effectively take on racist policing. Without Deborah, we lose an arrow in our quiver, and you deliver a major win to the police. So congratulations to the Republicans on this council, the party of Donald Trump and KC SO. We dissent to Chair Balducci joining with them.
Next on the list is Katie Hurley.
Hello, my name is Katie Hurley, K-A-T-I-E-H-U-R-L-E-Y. I'm Assistant Special Counsel for issues related to young people at the King County Department of Public Defense. I've defended youth charged with crimes since 2007 in King County's juvenile courts, and I'm providing public comment today in strong support of the youth right to counsel ordinance. One day last spring, as I finished another youth rights presentation, a 15-year-old youth who was living in a group home looked at me in disbelief as I explained his constitutional rights. At the end, all he said to me was, "That's not how it works." I tried to protest and explain the law and the constitution, and he was right. I've watched too many videos where I've seen an armed police officer interrogating a scared kid in the back of a patrol car. Rites are read like it's the Indy 500, and a youth, a child, usually a Black child, an Indigenous child, a child of color, is then interrogated by that armed police officer. Studies show that youth whose minds are still developing are more vulnerable to police coercion and have a hard time understanding, asserting, and protecting their own rights. To ensure youth, especially Black and Native youth and youth of color, do not waive their rights because they are too scared to assert them, they need to consult with a lawyer. In an extraordinary open letter to the legal community urging lawyers to confront racial injustice, the Washington Supreme Court justices said, "The injustices faced by Black Americans are not relics of the past. We continue to see racialized policing and the overrepresentation of Black Americans in every stage of our criminal and juvenile justice system. Last year, 86% of the youth jailed in King County were Black youth, Indigenous youth, and youth of color, and 72% of youth prosecuted. It is shocking and appalling. It is clear our system is built on racism and that youth are unfairly exploited in our communities. I urge each of you to vote in favor of the youth right to counsel ordinance, protect our youth, and enable a more racially just future." Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Serena Glover.
Can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Serena Glover, Executive Director of Friends of the Mammoth Valley. On behalf of Friends of the Mammoth Valley, I would like to thank the council for passing the moratorium on WBD licensing and permitting. And I would like to further ask you to keep the moratorium in place until all WBD legislation issues are fully settled. It is important that the WBD legislation is settled before any additional licensing or permitting is allowed in order to avoid further chaos and confusion for businesses, citizens, and the county government. As we normally do, Friends of the Mammoth Valley did not ask our members to dial in today to express support for the moratorium. In order to avoid lengthening your already very full and lengthy meeting. But I would like to remind you that Friends of the Mammoth Valley's position is endorsed by almost all the homeowners' associations in and around the Mammoth Valley, various unincorporated area councils throughout the county, environmental organizations such as the Sierra Club, Orca Conservancy, and the Snowkin Watershed Council, farm support organizations such as Mammoth Valley Alliance and Mammoth Valley Grange, many farm businesses, as well as many other local businesses, and a continually growing list of citizens from throughout the county. Again, we would ask you to keep the moratorium in place until all WBD legislative issues are fully resolved. Thank you for your, for the opportunity to speak to council today.
Thank you. Next on the list is Tom Quigley.
Can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
My name is Tom Quigley, T-O-M-Q-U-I-G-L-E-Y. I'm the president of the Mammoth Valley Alliance, where we're working to promote our valley farms and valley farmers. During these pandemic times, we're working overtime to meet the dramatic increase in demand for local fresh food. Now more than ever, people want to know where their food is coming from. On behalf of the Mammoth Valley Alliance and speaking for Mammoth Valley Grange, we urge you to keep the current WBD moratorium in place until all legislative issues are resolved. Also, please act on your acknowledgement that our current code enforcement efforts could be better. Let's start there and see how much of this code violation just goes away. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Michael Tanksley. I'll come back to that one, Madam Chair. Next on the list is Carolyn Akinbami.
Hi, this is Dr. Carolyn, C-A-R-O-L-Y-N, Akinbami, A-K-I-N-B-A-M-I. I'm a pediatrician living in Council District 2, and I want to thank the King County Council for your work. I'm calling to ask that you pass ordinance 2020-0253, the My Chance Dunlap Giddens Youth Rights Ordinance, and to thank my council members, Councilmembers I-L-I for sponsoring this ordinance. It's dismaying, but not surprising to know that as many as 90% of kids waive their constitutional rights when confronted by police, given the testimony we've already heard today and the unique vulnerability of children because of their incomplete brain development, and the unrestrained interrogation procedures too often used by police on children. Police shouldn't be allowed to take advantage of the fact that kids are easy to intimidate and may not understand their rights. And so to ensure that they aren't intimidated or scared into waiving their rights, everyone under the age of 18 deserves and must be given the opportunity to talk to a lawyer when detained by police before waiving their rights. Finally, I just want to thank the My Chance family for generously working and lending their name, their son's name to this ordinance to protect other kids in King County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Alexandra Navarez.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
And I was going to put on my video. Is that an option or no?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So my name is Alexandra Nedvayis. It's A-L-E-X-A-N-D-R-A, N like Nancy, A-R-V like Victor, A-E-Z. I'm a staff attorney with Legal Counsel for Youth and Children. We're a nonprofit organization that provides holistic legal representation to children and youth in dependency and juvenile offender cases, as well as civil legal aid to youth who are homeless or at risk for homelessness. LCYC is speaking today to ask you to support the youth right to counsel ordinance. This is much-needed change in our legal system. I want to start by making a comparison to what youth go through, to what we personally go through as professional adults. We all know how we feel when we, when we have been pulled over by a police officer. If you can take for a moment and recall the last time you were pulled over by a police officer, how did you feel? Nervous, stressed? I know I felt both nervous and stressed. I have a 12-year-old and a 14-year-old. I know that both of them would be incredibly nervous and scared if either of them was ever having to be questioned by a police officer. In my work, I've done countless presentations to youth where we do Know Your Rights workshops. I review the Miranda warnings with youth in the community. In not one of my workshops is a youth able to adequately remember the Miranda warnings, let alone be able to explain what they mean. I have talked to youth about their interactions with officers, and unfortunately, rarely is it pleasant or cordial. Rather, it's a moment when they are scared, confused, and just wanting for it to stop. Adding a system change for youth to be able to be advised by an attorney is essential to allowing them a chance to understand what's going on and giving them an advocate who is on their side for protecting their right. Interacting with a police officer is a moment when they are scared, just as it is for many adults, and in particular for a youth of color who see on TV time and time again that they will be treated differently merely because of the color of their skin or their last name. Ms. Hurley, a moment ago stated the incarceration and prosecution statistics of King County. We should be embarrassed by those statistics. Those are our youth of color, and we are failing them. We are considered a liberal county, and we have to do better. We have far too much education and information on the adolescent brain to continue to ignore the science. Again, we have to do better, and the right to counsel ordinance is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Amanda Sandoval.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
Perfect. Hi, my name's Amanda Sandoval, A-M-A-N-D-A-S-A-N-D-O-V as in Victor, A-L. We know that youth under the age of 18 are in an important stage of brain development and are vulnerable to making hasty decisions without weighing all the consequences. This is especially true for those who have experienced some form of trauma, like youth who have experienced the foster care system, homelessness, or come from a community that has been traumatized by disproportionate racist policing practices. Youth who are homeless experience an increased risk of police interactions because of state policies that criminalize homelessness. That chance of police interaction goes up when that youth is a youth of color. Providing youth with legal counsel when they're stopped is a basic form of their constitutional rights. risk of police interactions because of state policies that criminalize homelessness. That chance of police interaction goes up when that youth is a youth of color. Providing youth with legal counsel when they're stopped is a basic form of their constitutional rights and can help prevent them from entering the juvenile justice system, a system that we know is hard to exit once you've been entered into it. This legislation would be a helpful step in how King County can reach its promise of jury detention, and I urge you to approve the youth right to counsel ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back now, Madam Chair, to Frank Gittens. Michael Tanksley.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Is this Michael Tanksley?
This is Frank Gittens.
Oh, Frank Gittens. Please go ahead.
I want to thank everyone for being here today and all the efforts that they put in in this ordinance, um, um, Chances' father, and I appreciate everyone. I think this ordinance is a real big deal for our family and the community. And I know Chance isn't here anymore, but at least we can all go on and he can continue to help our youth. And that's just very important to us. So again, I want to thank all the people that put the effort in on this, and hopefully it passes in King County like it did in Seattle. And then again, I appreciate all the people behind the scenes that are working real hard to make sure to protect our youth and their rights for eternity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Hannah Scott. Hannah Waylander.
Madam Chair, members of the council, this is Hannah Waylander from the Washington State Nurses Association. I am appearing for item number nine on the agenda.
Please go ahead.
Well, I thought Office of Labor Relations was also going to be present as this contract is being presented to the county council. Has the process changed?
Are you here to give public testimony?
No.
On the item?
No, I'm here to answer any questions that the county council may have as the representative for the Washington State Nurses Association Supervisor's contract.
Let me jump in for a second, Angel. Sorry. Sorry, Hannah, to interrupt you. This is Claudia. When we get to that item, we're very glad you're here. It's hard for us to distinguish on the Zoom call who's for public testimony and who's here to answer questions or give a comment at an actual agenda item. So thank you for being here. We'll get to you at item nine.
Thank you very much. I'll hang in there.
All right. Welcome.
I have Jana Dietrich.
Thank you. Oh, can you hear me?
I can. Please go ahead.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Jana, J-A-N-A, Dietrich, D-E-T-R-I-C-K. I'm voicing support of the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Right to Counsel Ordinance, number 2020-0253, and wish that this bright, young, black man was still with us. As one who works for our community agency, Choose 180, as a therapist exclusively serving youth and young adults who've been involved in the criminal, legal, incarceration system, and with the majority of Black, Brown, and Indigenous people, it is my duty and privilege to advocate the best possible resources, which includes always having access to legal representation and council informing them thoroughly of their rights and urging them not to waive them so that they are not further exploited in an already vulnerable situation while interacting with law enforcement that have disproportionately targeted them. Thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you. The last person on the list is last three digits, two five nine. Please unmute yourself if you'd like to give public testimony. Last three digits, two five nine. That's all I have, Madam Chair. And you're muted.
Now I'm unmuted. Thank you. It's a little bit of a slow roll back up from being on break. All right. So at this time, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to ask that you unmute everybody on the line, please. And at this time, this might get a little loud. If you're muted and you would like, if you are unmuted on our end, everybody should be. And if you would unmute yourself, if there's anyone left who wanted to provide public testimony or general public comment and you haven't had a chance to do so, please speak up. Okay, I'm not hearing anybody. So, Madam Clerk, would you please mute everybody again? And we will move on in our agenda. I want to thank everyone who joined the meeting for public testimony or public comment. We really appreciate your involvement with our work and your input to our decision-making. So this brings us to item seven, which is proposed ordinance number 2020-0224. As I have shared with members, I am going to refer this item back to the Committee of the Whole, and I'll give a reason why and then pause for a moment because I know there's some discussion to be had. My rationale for this is because although it was voted out of the Committee of the Whole, it hung on my mind for the entirety of break because we're just not really fully, I don't think we've given it full consideration as to how it could be implemented, the cost, the labor implications, the trade-offs, the things that won't get done or that might happen if we charge ahead without thinking it through. And the fact that there, I at least didn't see any, I'm not going to say there wasn't any, but I didn't see any engagement with the community I've had, as I think some of you have had, in engagement with protesters who are advocating for Black Lives Matter and racial equity and justice. And I didn't, I heard from them things that they really want us to be doing, and this wasn't on that list. And I'm concerned about our resources being used for things that might not be the most impactful. And so I would like to take a few more steps. I'm not, I voted yes to bring this forward, and so this is a change for me. But I want to, I just want to do our due diligence. I want to make sure we take every step we need to before we make this decision, which although we don't have really good cost figures, is estimated at this point to cost somewhere between three and almost $5 million a year. And let's just be clear that that money goes to all county employees to pay for vacation time and overtime backfill, which means an awful lot of it is going to be going to police officers, corrections officers. And that's not, that those people don't deserve the days off just like the rest of us, but I'm really not sure that that's what the movement is asking us to do. So I would ask for this to go back to committee, and I'm going to pause there for a moment if anybody else would like to be recognized.
Dembowski.
Councilmember Dembowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification for those listening, this is the ordinance which would declare June 19th as an official holiday at King County for our employees and add it to the list with the other holidays, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, I need to say it's a little unusual, as in my experience on the council, to re-refer an ordinance where there's opposition to it on the merits rather than take a vote on it. But if that's how the chair wants to proceed, I would, under our rules, object to the re-referral to committee, and I'd like to speak to that.
Okay, so that's taken as a motion to not re-refer. And please go ahead and speak to it, Councilmember Dembowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You had mentioned dialogue and engagement with leaders of the Black Lives Matter movement. And as you and I talked earlier today, I had the opportunity to meet yesterday morning in Skyway with the Morning March folks, and we actually talked about this, and there was great enthusiasm for it. And as I reflect on it, I said most of my piece in committee. But in some ways, this could be viewed as a symbolic piece of legislation. And some might say that symbolism isn't important, but I think it actually is very important. We have seen around the country this year, the Black Lives Matter movement tearing down symbols of historic racism in the country in the form of Confederate statues, and in certain cases lifting up new symbols to more broadly reflect the great diverse fabric of our country and its advancement towards progress. And I think that is really the notion behind declaring June 19th as an official holiday, to make space, to have that time for reflection, to put it out there as on par with our other holidays, Presidents' Day, Christmas, Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, Martin Luther King Day. And I think it's, it's an important statement for our county to lead on it. And I think it's worth the cost, the identified cost of three to $5 million out of a $12.5 billion annual budget or so. Our county has a history of leading in this way with respect to the change of our logo and the name of our county. And at the time that was done, it started first to take the name away from Vice President Rufus King, who was a slaveholder, name it in honor of Dr. King. But the next step was, do we, do we change our logo from the old gold crown, right? The awkward crown for King County? And do we use Martin Luther King's image? And that was done, but the objection there, too, was about the cost and how much it would cost to change the logo on our buses and our letterhead and our cards and things like that. But this county, I think correctly, in the, in the time that has since passed, said, yeah, we're going to make that change because that symbol is important. And so I think this is an important and meaningful declaration. I think it can lead to a state holiday. I have a call scheduled with Representative Melanie Morgan later this week, who's been the prime sponsor of a bill to do that down in Olympia. We were going to talk about the path to success. I hope that's still the topic of the conversation, but it may also be about roadblocks and challenges. So I would ask that we, we take this up today, that we not re-refer it to committee. It does have provisions in it to negotiate with labor like we do on all such matters. I don't think this is just a budget item. I think it's a real policy piece of legislation that's important during these times. And I think that I have been particularly moved by the messages I received from many of our Black employees after the committee debate, and not just Black employees, managers in our own organization and throughout the county who expressed to me the importance of this for our internal culture. And as one person put it, is $4 million too much for us? I don't think so. And so I think that we could continue to work on this. If adjustments to other holidays need to be made, or folks want to go that route, that could be done in different legislation. But I would respectfully request that we take this up today and vote on it. And if folks don't want to do it, vote no. But I think sending it back to committee is what we do with legislation that we want to go away, at least in my experience. And I'm worried about that here. And given the limited calendar we have, I think this is fairly straightforward, adds the holiday to the list of those enumerated in the code. And there would be some cost, obviously, to that. But I think that's a cost, at least in my mind, worth bearing. And I understand that members may have a different view on that. Members may say, you know, I'd rather spend that money on something else. And that's a, that's a legitimate view from my perspective, obviously, and would be a reason to vote differently than in favor if on balance, that was the way what you wanted to go. But there's the reasons for my request, Madam Chair, that we not re-refer this and that it stay before us for action today. Or frankly, if folks want to work for another week or two for a courtesy delay, would be another approach. So I'd be happy to, of course, accommodate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Any other comments or questions, Councilmember Colwell?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I am one of the sponsors of this legislation, and I enthusiastically support it and would like to have it implemented. But I am willing to go along with the chair's decision, a motion, to send it back to the Committee of the Whole. I'm Councilmember McDermott, who chairs that, is with us. And I cannot imagine, without trying to put him on the spot, that he would want to bury this and not pay it any heed. But I think that there is reason to have more of a discussion regarding it, and we might come up with some different ideas. I just don't see it as an either or or mutually exclusive, that by sending it back or re-referring it to committee, that that means that we are opposed to establishment of this holiday. I certainly am not opposed at all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Councilmember Dembowski, would you like to say anything to close?
You're muted now. I did it twice.
I said, I think the rules say I only have to talk, I only get to talk once, but I'm just curious, now what do we do? We have a vote on, is it to keep it or to send it back?
We'll call for a vote. The vote is, so my, my decision as chair was to send it to the committee. The motion is to overrule my decision and keep it here, in which case it would stay on the agenda, and it would be up before us now.
I see. So a yes vote to take it up today.
A yes vote is to take it up today, and no vote is to send it back to committee. I hope everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, this is unusual, as you said. Okay. With that, Madam Clerk, would you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dembowski.
I vote yes.
Councilmember Dembowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Colwell?
No.
Councilmember Dunn, you're unmuted.
Don votes no.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn votes no. Councilmember Colwell votes no. Councilmember Lambert? Councilmember Lambert votes no. Councilmember McDermott?
No.
Councilmember McDermott votes no. Councilmember UptheGrove?
Aye.
Councilmember UptheGrove votes aye. Councilmember Von Reitbauer?
No.
Councilmember Von Reitbauer votes no. Councilmember Zahalai?
Yes.
Councilmember Zahalai votes yes. Madam Chair?
No.
Madam Chair, the vote is three ayes, which are Councilmembers Dembowski, UptheGrove, and Zahalai, and six noes.
All right. The motion does not carry, the item will be sent back to Committee of the Whole. Just echoing something Councilmember Colwell's just said, not only do I not think it will be buried, I don't think that it would be allowed to be buried. There's a lot of interest and passion behind this, this discussion, and I hope that we can have it and end up in a good place. I, like I said, I voted yes before. It's not that I'm opposed to the idea. I just am, I think we want to do some work on it. That's all. All right. That takes us to item eight, proposed ordinance number 2020-0253. Councilmember Zahalai to move it forward.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, this item is before us, and we have staff, oh, let me actually call on Councilmembers Zahalai to speak to it, and then we have staff to provide a briefing on amendments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. So, proposed ordinance 2020-0253, which is the My Chance Dunlap Gittens Youth Rights Ordinance, would require that young people age eighteen and under must consult with legal counsel after receiving a Miranda warning and before any further questioning by law enforcement. Legal consultation would also be necessary before law enforcement officials could ask youth to authorize a search of the youth's property. There is an exception for situations when law enforcement reasonably believes that information is needed to protect life. that information is needed to protect life from imminent threat. This legislation was passed out of the Law and Justice Committee on July 22nd. I know that there are amendments out there as well, which we will hear soon. And just to speak a little bit to this ordinance, we're we're a nation that's proud of its constitution and the rights the constitution extends to our residents, innocent until proven guilty, the right against self-incrimination, the right to an attorney, so on and so forth. And it's it seems to always be the case that if you are wealthy, well-connected, and have access to good information in this country, these rights seem to always be accessible to you. What the My Chance Dunlap Ginn's Youth Rights Ordinance would do is ensure that everyone in our country, including our most vulnerable, always have their constitutional rights. The My Chance Dunlap Ginn's Youth Rights Ordinance would help us protect our youth, keep young people away from systemic harm, and extend the rights that we give to everyone through our constitution, to our most vulnerable, and close this gap of haves and have-nots that seems to poke its head throughout our systems in this country. So I enthusiastically support this ordinance. I'm thankful for all the people who have fought to bring it before us. This is something that, as sponsors, we are just taking across the finish line. But there's a long history of work on the ground through organizers and organizations around King County that is making this possible. I ask for all of your support today. Thank you. You're muted, Madam Chair.
Muted. Oh, yeah, yeah. I've learned about Zoom. All right, I understand we have Jenny John Batista from our central staff to brief us on some amendments. Do you want to walk us through that?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Jenny John Batista, Central Staff. There are three amendments in your green folder for this item, Agenda Eight, Agenda Item Eight. The first amendment is on page three. And this is an amendment correcting errors and taking out the city of Seattle as a recipient of the required reporting. This amendment is sponsored by Councilmember Zahalay. Would you like me to go to the next amendment?
How many do we have amendments?
There there are three amendments.
Why don't you brief each of them and then we'll take them one by one? So let us know what all three are and then we'll start with number one.
Okay, so the second amendment is on page five, and that is sponsored by Councilmember Lambert. And that amendment adds a definition of imminent threat to the ordinance. The term imminent threat is used several times in the ordinance when describing the circumstances in which there is a prohibition against questioning, when questioning would be allowed. That definition was drafted to reflect case law. The third amendment is on page seven and it is sponsored by Councilmember Dembowski. And this is an amendment adding reporting requirements. It would require an annual report through 2023. And the report requires a number of data points. The report would be required to be provided by the King County Sheriff's Office, reporting on the number of youth arrests by month compared to the three years before the effective date of the ordinance, the number of times youth were administered the Miranda warnings, the number of times Miranda rights were waived, the number of times law enforcement requested permission from a youth to conduct a search of the youth, the number of times youth consented to a search, the number of times youth counsel were, legal counsel were provided to youth, and whether this ordinance has resulted in any systemic problems in securing safety in emergency situations or impaired investigations. And the ordinance, and the amendment specifies that when preparing the report, the sheriff is requested to seek input from the Department of Public Defense and the prosecuting attorney regarding impacts, whether perceived as positive or negative from the implementation of this ordinance. Madam Chair, that's a summary of the three amendments that are in your packet for this item.
Thank you very much, Ms. John Batista. Let's go back to number one and take them up one at a time. The first one is from Councilmember Zahalay. So put that before us, please.
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay, item one before us. I understand it's technical. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. Seattle sends us most of the caseload. Why wouldn't we want them to know that data?
This was simply, this was taken out because it was, the the report was intended, this report was intended to be for King County. A very similar ordinance was passed yesterday in the city of Seattle with the data going to the city of Seattle. But I do not see a reason why the city of Seattle could not be a recipient of the data as well.
That's interesting because if they passed something yesterday, they wouldn't have all this data. So it's it's a little interesting how that works logistically. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions or comments on amendment one? All right, not hearing any. I suppose we're doing roll call votes because of the Zoom, correct? So, no.
You could do a voice vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I'm going to call for a vote on amendment one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? In the opinion of the chair, amendment one carries. This brings us to amendment two. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move amendment number two.
Amendment two is before us. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. After the committee briefing, I had some concerns about what is the definition of imminent threat standard that is used to create the exception in this ordinance because it wasn't defined. So the attorneys working on this item assured me that there were decades of well-established case law articulating the law standard in this exception. But the average person reading our work would not, should not have to have a law degree to understand what the law says. And I don't have a law degree, some of you do, so you would know right off. But I figured it was a good idea for others to know that it would be helpful if we referenced what that case law is in definition of imminent threat. So the amendment simply adds the definition to the ordinance that is referenced in existing legal standard with a public safety exemption. And this amendment was written in consultation with our legal staff and the PAO's office. So it just adds the existing legal standard.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any questions or discussion on amendment two? All right, hearing none, I'll call for a vote on number amendment two. Please signify approval by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Amendment two carries. This brings us to amendment three. Councilmember Dembowski.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Move adoption of amendment three.
Amendment three is before us. Councilmember Dembowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment adds reporting requirements. And although Ms. Jim Batista didn't mention it, changes the frequency of reporting that was required, I think, in the underlying ordinance from quarterly to an annual report. This amendment was developed after discussions I had with stakeholders and following the materials we received in the committee's deliberation where there was some concern about impacts. And so I think to see whether or not there are implications that are problematic or perhaps beneficial from from the implementation of the ordinance, it would be helpful for us to have a report. And it's really the amendment divided into two parts. One is kind of an objective measurement of the of the number of times where this new protection would come into play. And then the other is kind of a qualitative assessment from the folks in in the sheriff's office, the prosecutor's office, and the public defender as to the implications. And that would come back to us on an on an annual basis for three years.
Okay, thank you. Questions or discussion on amendment three?
Madam, if I may, thank you, Councilmember Dembowski, for noting that the amendment does change the reporting timeline, the reporting requirements for the existing reporting. It is changed to twice a year.
Twice a year, sorry, sorry. I knew I got wrong as soon as I thought.
I was confused about that as well. The the line two of the amendment references reporting that goes from quarterly to twice a year, so reduces the frequency. But then line four suggests potentially a different report that is, it seems to be due once a year on January 4th. So can somebody explain, like, maybe they're referring to two different things and I'm just?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. There are two different reporting requirements. The ordinance that you have before you has a reporting requirement. Anytime that the sheriff's office invokes one of the exceptions and does not comply then with the existing ordinance, then they have to report on that. It was required to be, that that report be done quarterly. This amendment changes that report to twice a year. And then in addition, there is another report, separate report, that would be required for the next three years, reporting through 2023. And that was just a short-term reporting period just to see facts of this ordinance.
Yeah, to assess implementation over a period of time. Yeah, no, now I got it. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions or discussion?
Lambert.
Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. So in looking at this, I started thinking, logistically, how would this be done? So I wish that there, or is there somebody here from the sheriff's office that could explain logistically, how is this going to happen? Are we going to give them all the officers in the cars, a special hand calculator for this that goes into which computer system? This is a lot of data and we are short officers in our county. So I'm not sure logistically how this will be done for my first question. So does anybody know what computer program this will do or how it's going to be done or how many minutes this is going to take? Anybody know the answer to that question? Okay. So then I'll go on to my second question. Could somebody tell me the existing data? It's supposed to go back for three years. We have had problems with updating the sheriff's computer systems for many years. And we are in the midst of doing such in sections. And so I'm not even sure that we have the program to go back for three years and pull it out electronically, which means that we would need to have an employee, I'm not sure which employee, to go hand by hand back three years to find this information. I think three years is excessive. If we want to go back, we should figure out who the employee is going to do that and how much time it's going to take. But three years is a lot. Does anybody know that the data is in such a a way that you would not need to go file by file to get this information? Does anybody know that?
Councilmember Lambert, while I haven't discussed the specific amendment with the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office was able to report that in 2019, they had about 100 youth arrests. So certainly for a given year, they seem to be able to report the number of youth arrests.
So you said two things that are very important. Number one is that you didn't get a chance to talk to the sheriff's office. And second, we we're talking about arrests. This, not everybody who's Mirandaized is arrested. So, or could be Mirandaized, are arrested. So so I did talk to the sheriff's office. And no, they don't have this electronically. And they would have to go hand by hand to do this. And frankly, that is not the best, highest use for our understaffed sheriff's department at this point to go back even one year, much less three, to pull files hand by hand by hand. I think that this information is interesting and would be interesting to have, but I don't think it should be done by the sheriff's office. I think that either DAJD or the Office of Public Defense should do it. They should be able to get this information. They have more time to be able to do this because this is their client that they'll be talking to more long-term anyway. So I think that this, this is not well-cooked and we can't afford it. And so I think we have a situation here that should take more time. Sheriff's Office should be brought in on this. And we should sit down with Office of Public Defense and say, can you do this? And not put it on the sheriff's department that doesn't have manpower to do this or the computer technology to do it. So I'm very concerned that this was not well-vetted through the people who have to do it. And fiscal note that I asked Ballpark was pretty extensive. So I am concerned about this amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is that Councilmember Dembowski, you raising your hand? Please go ahead.
I had a question on how this would work with respect to the timing and the comparison period. So I I don't think it was the intent. I'm not sure it's written, but maybe Jenny could clarify whether or not they'd have to go back three years. It seemed to me it was to have an annual comparison. They might have to look to the prior year for the first year of implementation, but then it would be on a go-forward basis. Or have I got that incorrect, Jenny?
Councilmember Dembowski, as it is written, it does have the sheriff reporting simply the number of arrests by month compared to the prior three years of the effective, before the effective date of this ordinance. The other data points are all looking forward in the future.
Okay, so it's a rolled-up total arrest number for the three-year.
Right. And that's given that they're particularly, potentially because of the pandemic or other factors, there could be differences, just differences in the data from year to year. So the three years, but there's no magic to three years. It was simply in order to allow for the possibility that one year could have other confounding factors.
Thank you.
Councilmember, don't do she?
Go ahead, Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you. If your intent is that they only go back one year, I think we should make that clear. And then I also think that as this goes forward, and maybe we should, we should be talking to GPD or OPD about, could they better get this information than putting it on the sheriff's department? But I don't feel they have the manpower to do such or the computer power. But clarifying the the time of one year, I think would be a good idea.
I'll just jump in here to say that on the timing, I think it says that. The way I read it, I think that's what it says. It says, beginning on line four, on January 4th of each year, would set the cadence of this reporting as annual. And then if you skip over item one on the list, which has a separate timeline that is only for item one, which is the three years prior to the effective date of this ordinance, everything else hangs on the annual report. And I think it's very common for us to ask for annual reporting without saying for the previous year on every line of what is to be reported in the annual reports. The way I read this, I think it really does say that. And I'd be open.
The maker of the motion concurs for the record. That is the right.
That is what I, that's what I have extracted of your, of your intent. So there you go.
And if I can, Madam Chair, this this really came out of a discussion I had with one of our chiefs in my district, who we talked about this ordinance after it came forward. And and it came from the, you know, the report that they submitted. And I I I think we should take those concerns seriously. I have my doubts about them. But I also was cognizant, I think, in working with Jane to put together that, on the burdens in the office. And that's one of the reasons I've suggested with the amendment, instead of the quarterly report for the other information, we go to semi-annually because quarterly seemed pretty. seemed pretty, um, frequent. So with respect to which is the right department, uh, to prepare it, it seemed like since the, um, lead agency, if you will, with responsibility here is making the arrests, that seemed to be the place to, to me that was, was probably the most logical to prepare it. But we did say in consultation with the defender and the prosecutor with respect to the implications of, of the ordinance on, um, uh, solving cases, if you will. So, um, in the event that, I guess I'm open, if, if folks, if we're doing this, it seems problematic, uh, to having the Sheriff's Office prepare it. Um, and there's a better place, seems like we could adjust that. I don't have strong feelings about, about who prepares it, as long as it's the folks with the best capability of preparing it. It's kind of my thinking.
Okay. Um, I'll add one final thought, and then I'm going to stop talking and ask if anybody else has anything to say, and that is, uh, it's, uh, somebody who has been on the receiving end of this exact kind of report request, from fine elected officials on the county council. Um, you know, sometimes, uh, sometimes they come over in ways that the folks on the receiving end go, "Ah, huh, we can't really do that." Or, gee, it would have made a whole lot more sense for PSB to do that. And, uh, they're smart folks, they can work with each other, they can figure out how to respond. And if they can't, if they really realistically can't respond, it's going to come back to us. Somebody will come back and say, "Boy, you know, this part of item four, we just can't really do that." And, you know, I just think that it's, the council has been and, uh, should remain flexible, uh, when that happens, but, um, I'll just say that I'm prepared to, to move this forward today and be open to, if, if it does come back in any way with, there's just something that needs to be addressed here, we can do that if and when it occurs. That's my position. Um, so, uh, I, I'll support the amendment. If there's anybody else who wants to speak to it or ask a question before I call for vote?
Question?
Councilmember Lambert?
So can you explain to me, I'm glad that we're putting this on the record, because it's, the plain reading of line six says, "the number of youth arrests by month compared to the three years prior before the effective date of this ordinance." That sounds to me like three years before the effective date of this ordinance. And it's not just the arrests, it's talking about the times that the number of Miranda rights were waived, um, and, you know, the number of times youth were consented, had consented to assert. Um, I will say that I am very clearly believing, so first explain to me why that doesn't say three years, when line six looks to me like it says three years.
Uh, and one has got an exception to it. Now, it may be that, again, just based on my last comment, I will say this. Let's suppose that the sheriff receives this and interprets number two as applying to number one. So number of youth arrests. And of those arrests, how many times in the last three years were youth given their Miranda warnings? If they haven't been tracking that data to date, there is no way for them to provide that data, and they will say so.
Okay, as long as we are prepared for them to say, "we cannot give you that data at this point because we do not have it available," and not make comments about they don't do their work, or bad comments, or whatever, it is not, it is not feasible to ask that information. So as long as what we're saying to them is, "three years from now, you will have three years' data," then that's great. Um, but I, I think it really needed to be put on the record, and I do hope that our staff will immediately go to the Sheriff's Office and say, you know, "do you think this would be better, um, done by the Department of Public Defense, rather than you being the one to do it?" Um, and I think that's what you'll hear, but I think we need to be open to hearing that on the time clocks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments or questions? All right, item three is before us. All, Amendment Three, I should say. All those in favor of Amendment Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
On the opinion of the Chair, the, uh, Amendment Three carries. So this brings us back to the ordinance as amended. Is there a title amendment?
There is not a title amendment, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, so we are on final passage. Comments or questions on final passage? Councilmember Cole Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm speaking in support of this legislation. I'm also very pleased to be a co-sponsor of it. I've, when I have talked with people about this legislation, I get, uh, the same response all the time. What? Are you kidding me? This isn't done already? And people are stunned. It's pretty shocking, actually, when you think about it, that juveniles between the ages of, I think, would it be 13 through 17, are not granted the rights of adults or younger children, very understandably in that regard. And this, when juveniles come into contact with the, uh, criminal justice system, the juvenile justice system, uh, they, they can be set upon a trajectory that can impact their whole lives. Uh, I've heard mention with some of the prosecutors saying, "it can be the matter of having lost a cell phone and stealing one." Not a good thing to do, not something we accept at all, but there can be severe consequences if they get into the juvenile system. And we've got to make sure that everything that goes on in the, the transactions, the communications between that youth and the system are, are such that the youth understands the system and what she or he might be getting into. And that is incumbent upon having advice, legal advice. And it should never be the case that a youth goes in blindly and could be very, very intimidated and scared. Certainly, very likely not to have a knowledge base that perhaps most adults would have from just being around longer. But I think this also is important legislation. It will help save money, if you want to look at it that way. Uh, we very likely would have fewer youth going into the juvenile system, which is very, very costly. Uh, and we're talking here too about the, the school-to-prison pipeline. All of that can happen, regardless of whether somebody, whether a, a youth has an attorney present on the phone, in person, whatever. But it's less likely to result in bad outcomes happening because the youth did not have the knowledge to make a reasoned decision. And it could be because of fear, intimidation, manipulation. It could be that this kid just doesn't have the judgment capabilities that she or he would have later on. So I think this is a really important, uh, omnibus, I'm sorry, a really important ordinance that's before us. I enthusiastically support it. I appreciate Councilmember Zahalai bringing it forward to us, and I do urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole Wells. Others?
Councilmember McDermott?
Councilmember McDermott, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As others have spoken about, um, but more importantly, as we heard in public testimony, um, the, the maturity, the brain development of our youth isn't the same as adults. We shouldn't treat them the same. And when we have, um, frankly, complex legal issues, we should make sure that they have sound advice before, um, being required or expected to interact with the legal system. I'm really pleased with what we're doing, um, today with this ordinance and want to thank Councilmembers Zahalai, and I particularly want to cha, um, thank the, the family of, um, my chance for testifying and for, um, their work in bringing this legislation before us.
Thank you, Councilmember. Others?
Grove?
Never up the Grove.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it's been said before, but for me, uh, speaking in favor, the, uh, one of the most powerful analogies is that we don't let minors enter into contracts, because there, I think you shared that with me, Madam Chair. Uh, in, you know, in this state, we don't let minors enter into contracts because we recognize that, uh, young people's brains aren't fully developed. Um, it's not appropriate to assume that risk. So if we're not allowing them to enter into contracts, it doesn't make sense that we would allow them to waive their constitutional rights, particularly when, uh, in periods of time when there might be intentionally being misled and manipulated by authority figures, uh, authority figures who are doing that, uh, to pursue what they believe is the public good. But I think it is a common sense, uh, protection. I also want to note that this builds on previous work of this council. Uh, a measure that I was proud to spearhead a, a number of years ago, um, limited the ability, uh, for King County law enforcement to interview youth that were in county custody without, uh, an attorney present. And I think that our ability to build on that and take action today is a reflection of how far, um, I think the public has moved in terms of communicating and supporting measures that do a better job of balancing justice, uh, with safety. This is something I've heard from Black Indigenous Youth of Color in my district as, uh, one of the reasons that people often don't feel safe in their community is that fear of kind of being shaken down a little bit. And, uh, I think that by providing this common sense level of protection that recognizes the different levels of brain development among young people, um, provides protection for those who are most at risk and most vulnerable, and I think, uh, actually will, uh, represent a step forward, not just for justice, but also in the long run, to make sure people are safe and feel safe in their community. So I, uh, uh, encourage your support.
Thank you. Uh, I'll jump in here and give my own comments. Uh, I also speaking, will speak in support. Uh, so we were on break the last couple of weeks, and one of the things that my family did was we went on a river float. And before we could get onto the tubes to float down the river, we had to sign a waiver. And I have a 14-year-old son, and I had to sign the waiver for him, and he wanted to know why he couldn't sign it for himself. And I tried to explain as best I could in non-legal language that you have to be an adult, 18 years or older, in order to sign away your civil legal rights. So he can't sign away his own civil legal rights. Uh, but he could waive his own criminal legal rights. And that is, is fascinating to me, because criminal legal rights can have just as serious, in fact, more serious consequences in many cases. Um, I want to, uh, uh, thank all the folks that have been thanked by my colleagues, but I want to add, uh, our public defender, Anita Condoall, who I know is on the line, prepared to answer questions, although we haven't directed any your way. Uh, she and her team came forward to, to me, anyway, with this proposal, uh, either very late last year or early this year. And, uh, and then, you know, COVID, for a while there, with the Open Public Meetings Act rules, we weren't able to bring forward an item like this, a new policy item like this, uh, until we got back to more normal operations a few weeks back. And I'm really glad it's finally before us. I really appreciate Councilmember Zahalai for sponsoring it. Um, I've tried a couple of different ways, as we were sitting here, to put out my request to be added as a co-sponsor, and I'll just say it here so that the clerk can hear me, and hopefully add my name before we vote. It makes just really good sense. Um, it's been said, uh, in some of the emails we received and in comments that we know that young people, I mean, even up to the age of 25, really, uh, have a different way of processing information, especially around risk. And, uh, this is essentially a risk calculus, whether you, uh, agree to, uh, share information or respond to questions or coercion or persuasion even. And so, um, it seems to me that young people are more in need of objective, thoughtful legal advice before they make decisions than adults. So somebody said, uh, "we shouldn't treat youth differently than adults," and we should treat them better than adults in this, in this regard. They need more, uh, more support rather than less. So I'm very supportive of this, uh, proposal. Uh, and we do, I do like to give thought to implementation. How will, um, an officer in the field or anybody who, uh, needs to question a youth get access to a lawyer? Uh, our public defender at county expense, uh, has got on-call lawyers that will be available 24/7, uh, to give advice, so that that system is already in place and will be ready at a moment's notice, so that it doesn't have to unduly, this, this rule doesn't have to unduly interfere with officers responding to a crime or investigating a crime. And with the, uh, imminent threat exception that applies here, just as it does to adult Miranda rights, uh, if there's an ongoing incident, uh, there's an exception. So I think this is very well thought out, very well presented. I'm happy to support it, and I will be voting yes. Any final comments before I call on Councilmember Zahalai to close? Councilmember Zahalai, any closing remarks?
Let's get to voting, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to confirm, I did receive your sponsorship request, and it has been implemented.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Dembowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Dembowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn votes aye. Councilmember Cole Wells?
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells votes aye. Councilmember Lambert?
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert votes aye. Councilmember McDermott?
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott votes aye. Councilmember Up the Grove?
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove votes aye. Councilmember Von Wrightbauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Von Wrightbauer votes aye. Councilmember Zahalai?
Aye.
Councilmember Zahalai votes aye. Madam Chair?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
By our vote, we have unanimously adopted proposed ordinance 2020-0253 as amended. Good job, everybody. Moving on to item nine, uh, this is proposed ordinance 2020-0239. Uh, Councilmember McDermott, would you put that before us, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item nine is before us. This is a collective bargaining agreement, uh, with the King County Washington State Nurses Association supervisors and managers, and we have our staff member, Sam Porter, available to give a brief overview. Sam, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. Glad to see you.
Sam Porter, Council Central Staff. Um, the proposed ordinance before you, 2020-0239, would ratify a collective bargaining agreement covering approximately 34 supervisory and management-level nursing classifications in public health and DAJD, represented by the Washington State Nurses Association. Uh, the bargaining agreement would be effective January 1 through December 31st of this year, and would provide the general wage increase of 1.5% for the first six months of 2020, and an additional 1.5% for the second half of the year. This is the same, uh, general wage increase received by the Coalition of Unions and non-represented employees in 2020, um, and was also the same, uh, that was included in the CBA adopted in ordinance 19144, pertaining to nursing classifications of this group, which was passed by council on July 21st. Uh, the agreement would also make changes to language regarding terms of participation in the Joint Labor Management Insurance Committee and transition the work week, um, to the standard FLSA work week. There are also some miscellaneous changes, uh, to the articles of the agreement as well. The fiscal impact for 2020 would be, uh, $100,000, and in 2021, it's anticipated to be $134,000. No supplemental appropriation is needed to cover this amount. Um, and Andre Chevalier is here from the Office of Labor Relations, and Sydney James, uh, is present as well for the Washington State Nurses Association. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to give Mr. Chevalier an opportunity to say any words he may want to say. I know you're here for questions, but if there's anything you want to add, you know? Silence is not an option. Let's make sure you're here, say hi, introduce yourself, please. Andre, are you with us? Okay, perhaps we're having technical difficulties. Uh, earlier in the meeting, I believe it was Hannah Wielander, I hope I've picked the right name from my list, who was here from WSNA, Ms. Wielander. Do you want to say anything before we go into comments and questions by members?
Yes, Madam Chair, may I have the camera, please?
I think you can do it for yourself, or do you, we have to do it for them?
It says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Uh, okay. Madam Clerk, can you start her video?
Okay, there we go.
Yep. Hi, good to see you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the council. So, um, this was an interim one-year agreement- So, um, this was an interim one-year agreement that we reached with the supervisors and also with the staff bargaining units. We had been negotiating for several months when COVID-19 crisis hit, and because we represent nurses for obvious reasons, we had to take a break and came to agreement as mentioned earlier by Sam, um, on some of those items. So we have reached tentative agreements on a number of issues, but we decided that, um, this, the pandemic proved too much of an obstacle to continue as per usual. So we memorialized the existing tentative agreements, um, so that we can continue again this fall as we're starting up, and we're looking at September as the start dates for both contracts. Um, so, yeah, so the interim, um, contract only contained what Sam was, was saying. There was also, uh, updated public records request language, and, um, and we recommend to do pass.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you for being here with us today. I know that I will probably be the first of several who want to thank you and your members for what you're doing every day to respond to the COVID crisis and to, uh, help people who are sick and infectious and literally putting your lives on the line to, uh, to, to, to treat people. Uh, you are definitely heroes, uh, all the time, but especially this year. So, thank you. We appreciate your, uh, your work on this contract while that was going on. Members, question or comments about this, uh, labor contract? I think it was well briefed, and we understand what we're doing, and I would just as soon go ahead and call for the vote if nobody speaks up at this point. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dombowski.
Dombowski votes aye.
Councilmember Dombowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn votes aye. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells votes aye. Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert votes aye. Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott votes aye. Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove votes aye. Councilmember Von Wrightbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Wrightbauer votes aye. Councilmember Zahalai.
Aye.
Councilmember Zahalai votes aye. Madam Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
All right. Uh, let me get back up to where I need to be. Care with me for a moment, please. Uh, this was number nine, correct?
Correct.
Uh, okay, thank you. By our vote, we have unanimously adopted proposed ordinance 2020-0239.
Thank you very much, members of the council and Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us today. And send your regards to your members, please.
We sure will. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Item 10 is proposed ordinance number 2020-0235. Councilmember Dombowski.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Move adoption and defer to Councilman Von Wrightbauer, the strong proponent of this legislation for opening remarks and amendment.
All right. Councilmember Von Wrightbauer, would you like to give opening remarks?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, uh, Chair Dombowski of our committee. Uh, proposed ordinance 2020-0235 has an amendment. Do we want to do the amendment first? It's a technical amendment.
Uh, that's fine. Please go ahead.
Amendment one to proposed ordinance 2020-0235 would make technical changes to the agreement to correct minor errors. I urge your support.
And by the way, this is on, uh, page, uh, nine of the green folder packet. Any questions?
Chair Boldeucci, do you want me to brief the item?
Uh, well, hold on one second. We're in the middle of amendment one, and it's technical changes. So let's do that, and then we'll go back to briefing, which we should have done first. But thank you, uh, thank you, Ms. Kreckelzapi. Okay. Uh, any questions about the technical changes amendment? All those in favor of amendment one, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Amendment one carries. And with that, Councilmember Von Wrightbauer, would you give opening remarks before our staff report, please?
Well, I think we're, the staff and I are going to probably overlap here. Proposed ordinance 2020-0235 would approve an agreement to allow for operations of Pierce Transit Route 46497 to continue after the existing funding partnership agreement expires on September 30th of this year. Route 497 connects the Lakeland Hills neighborhood of Auburn to Auburn Station, and it's operated through a partnership between King County Metro, Pierce Transit, and the City of Auburn since 2008. According to Metro, ridership on Route 497 has grown 16% per year since initial implementation, and the route tracks more rides per platform hour than many other Metro peak-only routes outside downtown Seattle. I think our staff can speak a little bit more to this, but I urge your support. We've been working very well with the City of Auburn and Pierce Transit on this issue.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Ms. Kreckelzapi, please go ahead.
Thank you, councilmembers. Yes, um, Councilmember Von Wrightbauer did an excellent summary, and I will try not to overlap anything he said. So, um, I'm Leah Kreckelzapi, council staff. Um, the staff report is on page 131 of your packet. Um, the ordinance would, uh, the proposed ordinance would approve an agreement that is about to expire, um, in September 30th. Um, and, uh, according to the council staff analysis, the proposed agreement is substantially the same as the existing agreement. Um, as in the existing agreement, the proposed agreement would provide that Pierce Transit would be responsible for operating, uh, Route 497 according to the specifications in the agreement. And, um, King County, Pierce Transit, and the City of Auburn would each be responsible for contributing one percent of operating the route based on Pierce County's cost allocation model. Um, and the hourly rate for operating the service could not increase by more than 3% annually. Um, their agreement would be for a period of five years with the opportunity to extend for an additional five years without council approval. Um, however, the agreement is subject to appropriation of sufficient funds by each party and would be terminated if one of the parties didn't approve appropriation, um, of the funds. So that, that gets the council ongoing input. Um, and, uh, the cost is shown on table, the estimated cost is shown on table one at page 133 of your packet. And, um, the service wouldn't operate if prevented from doing so by causes beyond the party's control, including, um, a public health emergency or pandemic. Um, the service on this route was temporarily suspended in April, but it is back up in a limited, um, form today. And, uh, the partnership is consistent with the King County's, uh, Metro's Strategic Plan for Public Transportation, and the performance metrics for Route, uh, 497 are shown on page 133, table two of your packet, and they are, um, in the mid-range of routes operating outside of Seattle during the peak, which is consistent with Metro's service guideline criteria for maintaining service on a route. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kreckelzapi, anybody else? With anybody else? Anybody with questions for staff? We also have Katie Chalmers, I understand, from Metro with us, uh, in case we have questions Sounds like people are very satisfied, and so, uh, Councilmember Von Wrightbauer, anything to close?
I urge your support.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dombowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dombowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Dunn. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells votes aye. Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert votes aye. Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott votes aye. Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove votes aye. Councilmember Von Wrightbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Wrightbauer votes aye. Councilmember Zahalai.
Aye.
Councilmember Zahalai votes aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. And Madam Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
All right. By our vote, we have adopted proposed ordinance 2020-0235 as amended. Uh, this brings us to the hearings examiner consent agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please read items 11 and 12 into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 11 is proposed substitute ordinance number 2020-0174, authorizing the vacation of a portion of Southwest Luana Beach Road, Talberg Road, County Road number 834, file number V2724, petitioners Lawrence and Suzie Kuznets. And item 12 is proposed substitute ordinance number 2020-0189, authorizing the special use permit 450802 Southeast Grouse Ridge Road, North Bend. Petitioners are Washington State Patrol Fire Training Academy.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Dombowski, would you please, uh, put those before us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move adoption of the hearing examiner consent agenda items.
Now, those items are before us? All those, uh, sorry, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dombowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dombowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn votes aye. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells votes aye. Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert votes aye. Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott votes aye. Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove votes aye. Councilmember Von Wrightbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Wrightbauer votes aye. Councilmember Zahalai.
Aye.
Councilmember Zahalai votes aye. Madam Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
By our vote, we have adopted proposed substitute ordinances 2020-0174 and-0189. Uh, this brings us to motions from standing committees and regional committees and motions related to collective bargaining. Uh, since items 13 through 18, Madam Clerk, would you please read those into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 13 is proposed motion number 2019-0291, acknowledging receipt of a sheriff's office plan to increase staffing for the Sheriff's Marine Unit during the peak recreational months of June, July, and August in order to reduce safety issues by increasing the number and frequency of river patrols. Item 14 is proposed motion number 2019-0414, acknowledging receipt of the progress report on the coordination of the delivery of benefits and services to low-income King County residents. Item 15 is proposed motion 2019-0415, acknowledging receipt of the progress report on the coordination of the delivery of benefits and services to low-income King County residents. Item 16 is proposed motion number 2020-0195, acknowledging receipt of the final report on the coordination of the delivery of benefits and services to low-income King County residents. Item 7 is motion number 2020-0196, acknowledging receipt of the final report on the coordination of the delivery of benefits and services to low-income King County residents. And item 18 is proposed substitute motion number 2020-0255, requesting the executive develop a plan to implement the recommendations in the Department of Community and Human Services and Public Health, Seattle and King County, report on the coordination of the delivery of benefits and services for low-income King County residents, and explore additional recommendations to improve the coordination of benefits for individuals held in King County jail facilities.
All right. Councilmember McDermott, would you put the consent agenda before us?
So moved, Madam Chair.
The consent agenda is before us, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dombowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dombowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn votes aye. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells votes aye. Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert votes aye. Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott votes aye. Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove votes aye. Councilmember Von Wrightbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Wrightbauer votes aye. Councilmember Zahalai.
Aye.
Councilmember Zahalai votes aye. Madam Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
By our vote, we have adopted proposed motions 2020-0291, 0414, 0415, 0195, and 0196, and proposed substitute motion 2020-0255. All right. Uh, reappointment consent agenda items 19 through 20. Madam Clerk, would you please read those items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 19 is proposed motion number 2020-0123, confirming the executive's reappointment of Carolyn Lemay, who resides in Council District 2 of the King County Landmarks Commission. And item 20 is proposed motion number 2020-0125, confirming the executive's reappointment of Hickma Shurka, who resides in Council District 2 of the King County Children and Youth Advisory Board.
All right. Councilmember McDermott, would you put that consent agenda before us?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda is before us. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Dombowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Dombowski votes aye. Councilmember Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn votes aye. Councilmember Cole Wells.
Aye.
Councilmember Cole Wells votes aye. Councilmember Lambert.
Aye.
Councilmember Lambert votes aye. Councilmember McDermott.
Aye.
Councilmember McDermott votes aye. Councilmember Up the Grove.
Aye.
Councilmember Up the Grove votes aye. Councilmember Von Wrightbauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Von Wrightbauer votes aye. Councilmember Zahalai.
Aye.
Councilmember Zahalai votes aye. Madam Chair.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the vote is nine ayes, zero noes.
Now, by our vote, we have adopted proposed motions 2020-0123 and 0125. Uh, if there's no objection, the public's marked agenda, together with the changes made in today's meeting, will stand approved as the first reading and referral of ordinances and motions, items 21 through 34 as listed. And this brings us to, all right, uh, item 35. I have, have two requests for a report, uh, that's not necessarily on special and outside committees, but with your indulgent, councilmember's indulgence, I'm going to call first on Councilmember Lambert for a report on an issue incarnation, and then on Councilmember Cole Wells to report on the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you call me first, because I have the bad news, and she can have the good news. It's always better to start and with the good news, so, thank you. Um, so, in my district, we had a most serious event happen, um, a couple of days ago, and I wanted you to know just how serious this is. The, there is a dam, um, and the dam is monitored on a regular basis that is owned by the city of Seattle. Should that dam break, in 90 minutes, the people of Carnation would be under eight feet of water. In 120 minutes, they would be under 30 feet of water. So, the people are trained that when that siren goes off, you do not have a lot of time to decide to get out and to do what you need to do to get out as quickly as possible. The alarm went off on Tuesday at 11:16, and the alarm is supposed to go off on Wednesdays at noon, so people know that the alarm's being checked and monitored, and everything is just fine. People looked at their watch and said, oh my gosh, it's, it's noon already. Oh, no, it's not. It's 11:16. Oh, it's Tuesday, it's not Wednesday. And then the realization hit, this is not a drill. So, for 38 minutes out of a possible 190, these people thought that they were going to potentially die. It was very traumatic. So, um, I wanted you to know that this has happened. Um, we have had several meetings with the city of Seattle. Um, it turns out that we didn't know for several days what the cause was. We do now. There was a faulty master control, and so, um, because of that, they have installed new redundancies and new master control. redundancies and new master control. The sirens kept going off, but they were changing tones, so that people didn't know what that was all about. They were muffled, and so people inside the stores could not hear the alarms. Turned out that there were a variety of issues. One that was fairly easy to fix was that there was vegetation around the sirens, and so it was muffling that. It also added, thanks to our great work from our own emergency people, they've added Spanish language to the emergency information, so it will be broadcast in the future in two languages. We have talked about communication failures and the new procedures that have been put into place, as well as what went wrong in the procedures that were in place that weren't done by SPU. We have also learned some things about the evacuation hill, where the people are to go, because it is above the 30-foot mark. And the compliment afterwards was the children were the most equipped on what to do, because they train every year in school. And so the children knew exactly what to do. So thankfully, they were helpful, but we, as a council, will need to be talking in the next year as we talk about a variety of issues, what we need to do to assist with the evacuation hill and the communication needs there. I would like to thank our emergency command people, Brendan Makowski and his team, our comm center, who was very instrumental and thinking rapidly as the 38 minutes went on, exactly what we needed to do. Our sheriff's department, who went into immediate action also to make sure that the evacuation could be done as smoothly as possible, and there were many people who had already evacuated. So each of our emergency communications and sheriffs did an extraordinary job, and I want to thank them for their professional work in a time when this is scary. And we had a town meeting a couple of days later, and 197 people showed up. So we are working closely with SPU. I think we will have some good partnerships. We are trying to take this very positively. I don't know what has learned, but I will tell you, this was frightening. And so I wanted you to know, because you'll be hearing more about it, but I think it's good for you to know that it's happened, and we obviously never want this to happen again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Colewells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as you mentioned, today is actually the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution's being ratified. So 100 years of suffrage of voting rights for women that were won, not given to them. It was an enormous effort, but I think it's also important to note, and I've brought this up before the council many other times, that Washington State actually had the right of voting to women 10 years earlier in 1910, and it involved a lot of struggle. You may know that for about, it was between 30 and 40 years, women were able to be able to vote, and then there would be a Supreme Court decision, or something would come up to deny them, to take it away from them. And at times, they were able to vote, even in the late 1800s, but only for the superintendent of public instruction. Whether or not they could be on juries was another big concern. And when they finally run right to vote, after, again, an enormous effort, the vote was all by men, all male legislators, since women were not allowed to be in the legislature at that time. And they did go to the ballot as well because of an amendment to the state constitution that was ratified a few years earlier. But all men, only men voted among all the citizens, residents of the state, and it was by a two-to-one majority, which was really very astounding at that time, and that was throughout the whole state, every county. So that was very good, but unfortunately, when we gained suffrage, when women gained suffrage in 1910, indigenous women, Native Americans, Indians were not included. And it was not until 1924 where the U.S. Congress passed legislation and put it into the Constitution that Indian, Native American, indigenous people, women and men, were able to finally vote. But we also know, and very tragically, very unfortunately, throughout the time ever since then, since 1920, there have been enormous struggles and setbacks for people of color to vote, particularly Black Americans and immigrants. So there's still, there still are struggles going forward, but I thought that it was important to note that this is the 100th anniversary today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both, councilmembers. Lambert, for that information about what happened while we were away. I do hope that we hear that they've found a fix so that we don't unduly alarm people in the future. And thank you, Councilmember Colewells. This is the sort of thing where we would have had a very special presentation if we were together, but it's good to take a moment to acknowledge these important milestones and reflect on where we are. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. We do have an employment, oh, I'm sorry, I take it back. There is proposed ordinance number 2020-0226, but that is an advertised public hearing, which we've done, correct? No action required, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda for today. Oh, sorry, can I ask you a question about that? When does the moratorium come up for a vote, and what's the process for that, so that people who are following know what we're going to be doing?
This has already been voted on. This is actually, we're letting people know that we did this within 60 days of action, so.
But then six, we adopt a moratorium every six months?
Yeah, and we have to notify the public with a public, we have to allow them to have a public hearing within 60 days after. So this is, it's already adopted. There is no vote on this.
It'll come up again at the end of six months from the original adoption?
Only if another moratorium happens, a new proposed ordinance would come forward. This, this actually has a final number. It's not on the agenda. It's got an enacted number.
Oh, very good then.
Yes.
No action.
Nope.
Really no action. Okay. That brings us to the end of our council meeting agenda for today. Thank you, everybody. We do have an employment and administration committee scheduled to start at the end of this meeting on this Zoom call. I'm going to adjourn the council meeting and then give us all a five-minute break, and then at about 3:05, we'll take up the employment and administration committee meeting. So the council meeting is adjourned.